Really, thank you all for being here today. This will be my last address officially as mayor, although we do have to notice that I'm here this week. I do want to acknowledge the presence of my family, friends, and colleagues. I greatly appreciate you making the time to be here today. So I'll start by saying that in 2017, it would have been difficult to see the current world playing, but I knew with any certainty what the next eight years would hold. We've also been foolish to assume that all the cures to our ills are the answers to every problem. What that really means is that political pains and seasons that were in seldom reflect the future that lies ahead so well. And most importantly, under their leadership, I wish for our city of San Antonio to continue its steady march toward a more resilient, prosperous, and equitable city for all. Rarely do you get to choose your battles in life, but you can choose how you respond and who you respond with. It's comforting to know that with all my heart, that at San Antonio, we always responded together. It makes leaving this office easier than you think. We are a city that believes in everyone, no matter what, and believes that everyone is deserving of dignity and respect, and that everyone deserves a chance. A city that lives by, as Chavez's words, "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community." So I'd like to take the time to highlight how this community realizes that progress and prosperity by consistently showing up as a force far greater than the sum of the one and a half million residents. I entered this building, believe it or not, as a relatively young man. Since that time, this nation has grappled with over a decade that pushed the American dream farther out of reach for working families. But it was a scrappy city in South Texas, one of which, one in which more of those families already began well behind the starting line, that has stood unified to say, "To hell with narratives, let's do something about it." So as poverty rates have risen sharply in other parts of the country, San Antonio's has started to fall. As unsheltered homelessness surges in cities around the world, San Antonio has brought more of its people under safe roofs. Violent crime is down and great jobs are up. Even still, we know that the work has just begun. Poverty will take generations to heal. So long as there is one resident without a home, there are still more homes to repair and to build. Wages have risen, but not yet enough for a modern city. We will close our last coal plant well ahead of schedule and have become the number one solar city in the state of Texas, but like it or not, our region is growing and our air and water are never free from threats. We continue to weather the state and national politicization of disease, gender, autonomy, and the simple freedom of choice. We all deserve to live our lives how we want to live them, and until all are able to do so, the work must continue. It does remind me of something I saw in a recent news article that suggested that my legacy as mayor appears to be unfinished. And to that I say, "Well, yes, that was the point." Really think about it. Voters in our city collectively said yes to the city's first ever affordable housing bond and rapid transit lines, the first ever time. Eight more years of an expanded pre-K for SA, and over a billion dollars in neighborhood infrastructure projects, and the nation's largest city-funded job training program. We broke ground on the Alamo reimagining and doubling the size of our airport, and we helped Alamo colleges become tuition-free while charting a new path for downtown that's the envy of the world, all within the last five years. So yeah, part in the dust, but we're building, we are busy building the best damn city in the United States. Serious investments in the people of our community will be the only way we can finally pull ourselves out of the holes that we've moaned for so long. But we should be proud of the work that we've accomplished together over the last eight years, and I do want to emphasize that it has been together. So to my council colleagues, it takes the majority of this body to do anything transformative. We've built a legacy together that is yours to own. It's been a privilege of a lifetime to serve with individuals who bring an honest passion to public service. Councilmember Rocha Garcia, your steadfast commitment to your residents, addressing healthcare inequities, and creating affordable, sustainable developments presents some massive shoes to fill. If any new council members need some tips on how to be prepared for the work on that dais, look no further. We have high hopes for Councilmember Mungia to carry on your studious, thoughtful legacy. Councilmember Castillo, I didn't always recognize when, or frankly, why, we were sparring, but I've always trusted your instincts and heart to be pure. Thanks for working with me to realize a new era for affordable housing, and I can't wait to see you continue to work to ensure real security for San Antonio's working families. Councilmember Viagra, Phyllis, I am just so grateful for a colleague who doesn't hold back. I've learned this over the last 12 years. It is impossible to omit or forget the South Side when there is a Viagra on the dais. And to be honest, the North Side deserves to hear it from you every so often. I hope you count on me as an ally and a friend as you build a more sustainable future for District Three. Councilmember Cabell Haga, it's been great working with you over the last six years. The community will remember you for your commitment to transparency in our public safety policies and for your willingness to engage our community on some of the most pressing and difficult issues at City Hall. Councilmember McKee Rodriguez, I have really enjoyed our one-on-ones. You are a genuine oracle, and the regular exchange of ideas has afforded me the opportunity to learn from the next generation of leaders. I am confident that the East Side has a serious champion as you tackle tough questions and conversations over the years. Councilmember Corr, you were the first in line to tackle the orange cone epidemic head-on. Your bravery and eagerness to learn are a potent mix for a public servant, as is your ability to become a veritable expert in almost any policy that hits your desk. I'm looking forward to the next four years of you stewarding our center city. Councilmember Aldette Gavito, like Councilmember Corr, you've picked some of the toughest issues in our community, especially as you work to mitigate our community's stray animal population. I'm grateful for your commitment to our first responders, and you do make your family's legacy proud. Councilmember White, while we often disagree, you've shown that you bring an open mind to your work. Our best moments together are when we all do that. Thanks for keeping our good-natured banter throughout all these difficult political times. Councilmember Courage, your honesty and integrity are second to none. Thanks for serving as a voice of reason and as a champion for the average San Antonio neighbor. You reminded us that a budget is a moral document, and every decision made in this building should be to help the entire city. Councilmember Palais, behind all those jokes is a truly compassionate heart and a dedicated dad. We are all better for how you weave that into your work. You've been deeply serious about economic development along with San Antonio's role as an international city, and I'm especially grateful for your commitment to our District Eight, the place that nurtured my passion for public service. So I would like for all of us to give a big round of applause to the most transformative city council that has San Antonio has ever elected. But what good is our vision if the organization can't put it into action? So if you'll indulge me for just a moment, I'd like to thank our city staff leadership. Eric Walsh, man, I will seriously miss taming goat rodeos and cowboy-ing up. For everyone else in the room that needs finding common sense amid the chaos and making the right decisions, no matter how tough they may be. You were my wingman as a deputy when we pulled together a plan to save the Bracken Bat Cave, and since then, you've been a partner and a friend through some of the most challenging times our city has ever faced. Given the height of our aspirations, the severity of our challenges, and the audaciousness of our ideas over the last eight years, I really do think that we have the best city manager in the country, y'all. So again, please tell Sandra and the kids that we were grateful for them, too. To Maria Viegomez and her teams, where would we be without you? The answer is nowhere. I know that leaders in City Hall sometimes measure their dedication by whether or not they stayed as late as Maria that day, but there is really no way to measure how efficient, diligent, or responsive she has been throughout her remarkable career. So thank you, Maria, for your endless reserves of professionalism and candor, and most importantly, Special thanks also, under her leadership, to our chiefs, Bill McManus and Valerie Frausto, and to all of our first responders for keeping us safe. They are truly the best of the best. Lori Houston and her teams, you bring big dreams to fruition, whether it's the city's first ever affordable housing bond, the Alamo redevelopment, a rental assistance program that became a model for the nation, or a new era of vibrancy and activation within our downtown core. We've always been able to count on you, and I'll miss your creativity and your heart to serve our most vulnerable residents. Jeff Coyle, we are doubling the size of our airport, and year after year, you, along with Sally, Juan, and their teams, have successfully managed to preserve our community's voice and prevent the state and federal governments from seizing City Hall. No joke. Your teams deserve every bit of praise they receive, and special thanks, of course, to Jesus Science for delivering our airport into the 21st century. Alex Lopez, I think it was just minutes after you were promoted that we had to get the ball rolling on the ready-to-work implementation. You've been instrumental in some of San Antonio's biggest victories, including the $1 billion week that brought Navistar and our community's massive expansions to Toyota. Things like JCD, a new plant, or new sister cities don't happen overnight, and so I want to thank your teams, especially Brenda Hicks-Sorensen, Sherry Delachai, and also Janice Saez Herrera for their teamwork and friendship, and a big special thanks to Mike Ramsey for doing the impossible for our residents each and every day. John Paterick, we miss you, John, on our side of the second floor, but it's been great watching you adapt to a role that is no easy job. But now that I'll be driving again soon, I look forward to texting you about nuisance construction zones. Thank you for everything that you've done for my office and for the city and your roles in the city manager's office. I did see David McCary. I still see David McCary. I've appreciated the opportunity to work with you and your deep dedication to the UNCF. Your commitment to your employees is unmatched, and it's been an honor to watch you rise through the ranks. I'll miss the guy with the best attitude in the city. Ben Rosell, we simply wouldn't know how to do anything without you. There is not a better chief financial officer in the country, so thank you for keeping our books and our heads level. Andy Segovia, thank you to you and Liz Provencio and the entire city attorney's office for keeping us, me, out of trouble. You have always been focused on doing right, not just being right, and that is a blessing to every single resident of the city of San Antonio. I will miss seeing your dedication to the law and to our community every day. And to Emily Megan, Joe Frank, Ashley Lorena, Cindy, Joanne, and to the 13,000-plus employees within the city of San Antonio and this organization, thank you for putting your heart and soul into this community around the clock. We truly have the best workforce of any city in the country. But beyond city staff, elected officials don't operate alone. We each share office space with a team of individuals who work on the residents' behalf to realize our vision and to drive change. They become our family. Thank you to Zach Like, my chief of staff. That job, as you know, is not for the faint of heart. It has been called the hardest job in politics. To have a partner in the office who you trust to have your back, who shares your vision, your passion, and drive for the community you serve, and who always does it without getting the credit he deserves, is truly something remarkable. This I can say to you all with all seriousness, I would not be here without Zach. So indulge me, please, and let's give him a well-deserved round of applause. And by the way, to Pierre, he's moved on, to Joe, Gus, to Aaron, and all the past and present members of the executive detail team, thanks for literally having my back. And keep on rocking, fellows, if you know what I mean. Allison Hira and Jackie Bolz, they were two of the first hires I made in District Eight and have been my guardians ever since. Between the two of them, they have almost 90 years of service to the city. Nine zero. I'm grateful that they decided to postpone their retirement to keep serving me, alongside me. Same goes for Bruce Davidson. You know he's a former newspaper man and agreed to unretire to be my communications manager, but honestly, he's been so much more than that, including a mentor, a historian, and a counselor when the occasion called for it. To Victoria, Alex, Isa, Nadia, and to my former staff, Gabrielle, Juan, Teresa, Rosio, Yvelisse, Michelle, and so many more, I have been inspired by each and every one of you, and I consider each of you to be exemplary public servants. You could all be working well-paid private sector jobs, but our mission was more important than that. You will always be on our team. And also to Victoria, thanks for your endless sense of humor every time we lived through planes, trains, and automobiles. You all might know that I've been packing up my office lately, but I've been delaying taking down my most prized possession in the office, and that's a painting by Christina Sosa. It depicts a photo taken by my friend John Alonso and shows me holding my nine-year-old son Jonah's hand while I took the oath of office eight years ago, standing right there. Jonah's not here today because he's in Japan with the Shurani Foundation, where he will celebrate his 17th birthday. I have him to thank for my passion in public service, which is a life I never planned for, but his daily question to me when he was a toddler and I was on the city council, "How have you made the world better?", continues to be my best guide. Allow me to thank also my dad Ken, many of you know him, he's here, for continuing to remind me about the difference between a statesman and a politician. Along with my stepmom Carol, they are two of the most dedicated campaign volunteers I have ever had. Thank you, guys. And to James Lee, James and Anna, thank you for being there for me. Sometimes we don't always agree on politics, but we did agree that serving the city was an important thing to do, and I thank you for always being there for me. And to Erica, what can I say? I'm grateful that this city has slowly but surely gotten to see the relentless passion and fearlessness she has for the people she loves and for our entire village. And it may sound ridiculous, but even as mayor of the seventh-largest city in the United States for the last eight years, every day, I'm still the 24-year-old newlywed trying to make his wife proud when he gets home. Erica, I love you. Thank you for letting me and the city you love walk beside you. So this will be my last official address as mayor, and so I want to go back to the power of this community. Everyone in this room knows where they were in March of 2020, but do you remember February 2020? Unemployment was at 3.7%, and months prior, we had just announced our best quarter for economic development and job creation in two decades. Our city was the fastest-growing in the nation. Even then, some 60,000 people relied on our food bank every week to keep meals on the table. Only 26% of our workforce had a post-secondary education, and nearly the same number, one in four adults, were considered functionally illiterate. Within just a few weeks, over 120,000 residents were in our food bank lines. Unemployment spiked to 13%. The cracks in our city's economic foundation, like so many other communities across the country, were laid bare. We were forced to reckon with the fact that San Antonio had a severe underemployment problem. It's why so many of our neighbors in our city were considered the working poor. They do most of the labor, yet they still bear most of the burdens. Despite all of the growth and economic progress, including the diversification of an economy that once relied almost entirely on our military and our tourism sectors, far too many of our residents still were being left behind. So we had to face a pretty blunt question. Where do we go from here? In short, what we have shown in San Antonio is that you bet the farm on the potential of the people. The path to economic mobility lies at the intersection of housing affordability, education and workforce training, and improved transit infrastructure. Seven months after the pandemic gripped the world, voters approved three sales tax referenda by wide margins to expand pre-K for SA, launch ready-to-work, and to dedicate future revenues to creating our city's first ever mass transit lines. A year later, voters approved a charter change that allowed us to execute, one year later, the city's first ever housing affordability bond. And now, 10,000 homes attainable for the residents of this city have been completed or under construction. That means that between 2020 and 2022, San Antonio voters approved a little less than $2 billion of physical and human infrastructure investments above and beyond the city's annual budgets, all without new or increased taxes. But we must think beyond the votes and the investments. This is about the power and the potential of our people. Take the average ready-to-work participant. She is a woman of color, raising children in a household that is earning less than $14,500 a year total. When that participant graduates, it takes, on average, 55 days to get placed in a new job, and then they're earning $44,000 a year with benefits. The household income nearly triples, the kids are in a better position to succeed, and the cycles of poverty have a better chance of becoming cycles of economic empowerment. If you're not getting the full picture yet, let me tell you about Mr. Joel Bongweli. I had the opportunity to sit down with Joel and a few other ready-to-work graduates just a couple of weeks ago to hear firsthand how the program has enabled them to thrive in our community. Joel is an immigrant who chose to start a new life in San Antonio over a decade ago with his wife and four children. He had routinely worked multiple jobs to make ends meet, including many hours as a housekeeper for University Health. So when the community bet on our neighbors, Joel got a chance to bet on himself at a local career fair and enrolled in ready-to-work to earn an IT certification. Upon graduation, University Health was rolling out a new software system to schedule its housekeepers. They needed a new manager that was familiar with the work and who had also had to acquire technical skills to maintain that system. So I think you know where this is going. Joel doubled his pay. A year later, he received a promotion, and it's my understanding that he's recently been promoted again. Now Joel only needs one job to provide for his family, and just through Joel alone, this community, that lifetime of increased economic mobility will deliver hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in new economic activity to this community. But most importantly, a family's lives, the Bongweli family, including those children, have been changed forever because San Antonio said yes to Joel. Yet Joel's story is one of thousands now in our community. Take Ms. Oga Escobedo on the West Side. Oga Escobedo's parents bought their one-story home on San Antonio's West Side in the early 1960s, where she and her siblings were ultimately raised. Nearly 40 years later, Oga was the sole owner of the house, but it was far too much to handle, and the house was in a state of disrepair and nearing demolition. It's a story that we've seen too often. So from the dais behind me, with a little pushing from Terry, we piloted Operation Rebuild, which ultimately saved Ms. Escobedo's house, making it as good as new. So on the night of her welcome-home party, Oga turned to her sister at one point and said, "Look what they did to Mom's house." And her sister replied, "It's not Mom's house, it's your house now." These stories highlight the full power of our community. Whether you're a multi-generation San Antonioan or looking to build a better life within our city, we trust you, we care about you, and we're going to bet on you every single day. So thank you for believing in the potential of our neighbors. Thank you for hiring our friends. Thank you for building homes for our families. And thank you for betting on me all these eight years, because it's the raw talent in our community that has always lived within San Antonio. We just needed to give our neighbors their shot, so let's keep doing that. There's a second part to that Sevora Chavez quote I highlighted at the top of the speech, so I want to leave you with its close. Our ambitions must be broad enough to include the aspiration of "Our ambitions must be broad enough to include the aspirations and needs of others, for their sakes and for our own." So keep reaching higher for yourself, San Antonio, but always remember that you have two hands. It costs nothing to reach out for a neighbor, but it could mean everything to our community. So thank you to my friends, my family, for always having my back. I see many of our comadres and compadres here today, Mike, Martha, Francisco. Thank you for always lending a helping hand, and thank you all for the privilege to serve. San Antonio, si se puede. God bless you all.